Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our July twenty eighth council meeting.
June.
June, sorry. Geez, you guys, just wait to pounce on me.
Got her all stirred up, she doesn't even know what day she's at.
I'd like to call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. Under the agenda, there is four point one. A presentation by Noel Chin from Matrix Group on our financials, audited financial statement. I would like to take a fourteen three. Or sorry, fifteen, what is it, fifteen one and add it as a fourteen three. And fifteen three and add it as fourteen four. Under closed eighteen point two, business interest of a third party. Is there any others? Could I have someone move to accept them? Deputy Mayor, all in favor, carried. So we will call upon Noel Chin from the Matrix Group to give the audited financials. You should have the privilege to share your screen.
Good amount of twists, so the first step was to get it.
Are you watching? Black, Noel? Green is black. Yeah, there's nothing on it.
Yes?
Can you not hear me?
I can, it's kind of cutting in and out. I see in there that you guys can, is that my screen reflection? So you guys do see the audit report?
We can see the report.
You can or can't, sorry.
They're good, Noel, they can see it.
Okay, perfect. All right, I'm just gonna start here again. Thank you again for having me here today. I'm here to present to council the December thirty one, twenty twenty audit findings report for the town of High Level for the consolidated financial statements. My name is Noel Chin, I am the engagement partner, and as typical, the purpose of this meeting is to provide an overview of how the audit went, were there any significant findings? And if there's any questions, I'll open up at the end of the presentation for any general questions or inquiries. As of today, June twenty eight, twenty twenty one, we have substantially completed the twenty twenty audit for the town of High Level, with the exception of our requirement, our communication to council, the approval of the draft from council, sign management representation letter, the submission of the financial information returned once these audit financial statements have been approved, and also the completion of the FCSS review. Okay, so those are just the last few items that we have to to complete. And last but not least, if there are no changes and these drafts have been approved, we will perform a subsequent event procedures up to the date of audit approval. Just to remind everyone, appendix one is to reiterate the fact of the, one of the core, core main ingredients, I guess, for an external audit is to ensure that we are independent of management. So appendix one essentially indicated that everyone from myself to every individual on the audit engagement team is independent of management, so there are no independent impairments for this engagement. Our responsibility, we'd just like to remind council, these are these financial statements that our audits were performed according to auditing standards, and the financial statements were performed in accordance to accounting standards for nonprofit organizations. So one of the key things I want to remind everyone that these financial statements provide reasonable assurance, but not absolute. Okay, because according to standards, we perform testing, sampling, you know, we perform analytics, our inquiry, and the fact that we don't test every single transaction is the result why it does not provide absolute assurance, okay? Responsibly of a management, so management is responsible for the preparation of these financial statements and to ensure that these financial statements are reported, prepared in accordance to public sector accounting standards. Now, this year, I think, and going forward, we will be compiling the statements on behalf of management. However, to ensure that there's no independence impairments, what we have done is that, you know, every adjusted journal entries and every reclassification entries will be provided to management and to obtain their approval and consent prior to ensuring that these financial statements are reflected with these adjustments. So this is how we maintain our independence without crossing the line and performing management duties, okay? Our audit approach is very similar to prior years. Our audit approach is the combined approach where we are able to rely on the town's internal controls with regards to financial reporting processes. So a combined approach mixes the utilization of internal control testing along with substantive audit procedures such as vouching, supporting documentation, and substantive analytical procedures. This methodology approach serves to be much more efficient than performing a substantive procedure alone without sacrificing audit quality and effectiveness. Touching materiality, our materiality has not changed from prior years. The materiality that we use is consistent, which is a lesser of revenues or expenses to be two percent. And for the twenty twenty year, we're looking around three hundred and thirty five thousand to be the materiality utilized for this engagement. And I just want to remind everyone that materiality is the basis as to why we cannot provide absolute assurance is because our audit sampling, our determinants of whether our errors are material and trivial are based on the notion of materiality. Now, the materiality doesn't necessarily indicate that management has made three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars errors. It's the threshold that if we do propose adjustments to management and they did not want to change these errors, and if they amounted to more than three hundred and thirty five thousand, we would then be required to issue a qualified opinion, okay? So that basically is just a threshold that we've indicated for this engagement. So moving forward here, I'm gonna touch briefly with regards to the audit results. Now, the audit results here, we would like to discuss are, what are areas of high risk that we deem based on our understanding of the town? What are our responses for these high risks? And if there were any significant findings that were identified as a result of audit procedures performed? So first and foremost, cash and cash equivalents, always, the inherent risk for cash is always subject to that. So what we do here is we review management internal controls and processes to ensure if there's appropriate segregation of duties in place, appropriate checks and balances. And, you know, based on the findings that we identified, we did provide some adjustments to management, which they did accept, and as a result, there were no significant findings that pertain with regards to cash and cash equivalents. As you can see, in twenty twenty, the cash increased, well, twenty nineteen, the cash was on three hundred and twenty five thousand, it increased to two point six million dollars. Now, cash is, you know, again, keep in mind, this is at the end of the year, the ending balance at the end of the year, as at a point in time. So there's many factors that plays into this, especially due to timing, whether or not accounts receivables are collected, accelerated compared to prior years, our accounts payable basically paid off quicker compared to prior years. But one of the key factors this year was the recipient of the cash receipts related to the disaster recovery program, which was roughly around two and a half million dollars, and also other grants such as the most grant from Alberta Municipal Fair. So those were kind of the key drivers to why there was such a significant increase in cash compared to prior year. For investments, the risk here for investment is, is it recorded appropriately? And when we use the term appropriately, the assertion that we're most concerned about is valuation. So some of our procedures that we perform is obtaining bank confirmations. We inspect the town's investment balances, perform a recalculation to assess the reasonability. As you can see, there hasn't been significant changes to the investment balance. Some of the proposed adjustments were provided with regards to whether or not to, for interest accruals, and they were accepted by management as well. So as a result, there are no further issues or significant differences with regards to the investment balance. For receivables here, one of the key risks that we're concerned about is not whether or not the receivables actually exist, was whether or not the valuation of it is appropriate, so is it collectible as at the end of the year? So as a result, you know, one of our key responses is subsequent event testing to ensure that activities that happen subsequent to the end of the year do reflect the nature of it being recorded as a receivable as at the end of December thirty one, twenty twenty. So we do have some hindsight to verify the adequacy of these receivables as at the end of the year. Excuse me. We also coordinate our efforts with the other areas such as deferred revenue. Accounts receivable and deferred revenue, a big portion of these receivables are related to government grants. And if the town meets the eligibility criteria, whether they spent it or not, or they've been approved, this does require recognition of these grants to be receivable, which will play a difference with regards to cash accounting compared to accrual. One of the biggest reasons with the decrease in accounts receivable is collections, and it's, to my prior point with regards to cash, as the town did collect roughly around two point five to three million dollars of the disaster recovery program grant. So along with the DRP and also with the Alberta Transportation Grant that we accrued for roughly one point one million dollars, this pertained to the primary results of the decrease in the accounts receivable balance. And again, proposed adjustments were provided to management, they were accepted. And as a result, there are no further significant material differences, in our opinion, as of December thirty one, twenty twenty. So accounts payable here, one of the biggest concerns for accounts payable, you know, for accounts receivable was valuations, and it was, you know, sometimes existence, whether or not it was captured in its entirety. For accounts payables, the other way around, what we're concerned about is whether or not all accounts payable were recorded as at the end of the year. So the completeness assertion is what we cater our audit procedures towards. So some of the key procedures that we perform would be subsequent event testing, which is search for unrecorded liabilities, where we would obtain subsequent bank statements and obtain samples and vouching for items above our threshold, just to verify that they were recorded in the appropriate periods. And based on this, there were adjustments that we identified that were not captured in the accrued liabilities. You know, a primary for some examples that we have here are government remittances, holdbacks, payroll accruals. So these adjustments were identified and proposed to management, and they accepted as well. And as of the end of the year, there weren't any significant deficiencies for accrued liabilities and accounts payable. Deferred revenue, this is primarily more of a financial reporting, I guess, instrument and standard, and it does definitely deviate and is different from the actual cash accounting. Here, the key consideration, concern here is, are compliance and eligibility criteria is met? And as you probably noticed, deferred revenue, tangible capital assets, and the recognition of expenses all tie one and one. So whether it's a capital grant or operating grant, we would vouch, we first would vouch the addition, so new grants that were received in the year or approved that have not been received in the year and have not been spent, we would vouch these additions to the actual grants contracts to ensure the appropriate recognition of being added to the deferred revenue continuity schedule. Following then, for revenue recognized, we would then vouch it to the expenditures or capital expenditures that were occurring in the current year to ensure that the eligibility criteria is met. After these substantive testing have been done, we will then perform substantive recalculation of continuity schedule. And here, with regards to grant revenue recognition and accruals, there were some adjustments that were provided to management. These were accepted as well, and as a result, no further significant deficiencies remain with regards to deferred revenue, okay? Long-term debt, here, it's primarily just to ensure that, whether it's a new debt that's been acquired or the repayment of the principal has been appropriately captured by management. So as you can see, in twenty twenty, the balance was decreased, and this is primarily just due to the eventual repayment in twenty twenty. We confirmed it with third-party confirmations from the bank of what the actual expected year amounts were. We performed a recalculation based on those. We did propose some adjustments for management to true up these ending balances with our third-party confirmations. They were accepted, and as a result, no further significant findings remain with respect to long-term debt. The landfill closure and post closure, again, this is primarily more or less a valuation. We consistently maintain that model with regards to monitoring costs and inflation factors that were utilized. And based on our calculations, you know, typically, we do propose these adjustments for management. And based on the actual current, I mean, the modeling that we performed, the adjustment of fifty to eight thousand dollars was proposed and accepted by management with regards to landfill liability and closure and post closure cost. Tangible capital assets, again. Primarily, what we do here is that we want to ensure that, you know, all the assets exist, this is one, to ensure that all assets that were incurred and as an addition were actually captured appropriately. Valuation is also assertion that we can, that we want to ensure is appropriate just because of amortization to ensure that it's amortized in accordance with the town's methodology. And so as a result, we did addition and disposal testing for the current year to ensure that any new additions were accurately recorded and also completely captured by management. Following those, the addition testing, we would then perform a recalculation to ensure amortization expense and accumulated amortization was actually recorded appropriately. So based on some of our procedures with regards to with additions, amortization expense, these adjustments were proposed to management and also accepted. And as a result, there weren't any further significant findings that we identified as at the end of December thirty one for tangible capital assets. Tax revenues and user fees and goods, so here, now we're moving on towards the income statement, and we want to ensure that revenue that were recorded occurred, it was recorded accurately and in accordance with the bylaws that were approved by council for the applicable period. So with tax revenues, nothing has wavered from our audit procedures in the prior year, our substantive analytic and our internal control testing. We perform, does allow us with a great, you know, a pretty good, I would say, accuracy when it comes up to our substantive analytics by taking the assessment values, recalculating the approved mill rates to come to our expected tax levies. For user fees and goods, this is where we would have to perform a little bit more vouching. So for areas that allow us to do substantive analytical procedures, we would. But for the remaining amounts where we cannot, we would then perform vouching, which is selecting a pretty large amount of samples and asking for supporting documentation to ensure that the reportings were accurately performed by management, okay? I think there was, there were some, for taxes, I think there was just minor adjustments that were proposed, and they were, again, were accepted by management. For user fees and goods, we did propose some audit adjustments here, and again, they were accepted by management, and as a result, no further significant findings were identified. Government transfers, again, this will then link to, you know, what I alluded back early for deferred revenue. The revenue recognition part of deferred revenue touches essentially government transfers. So whether or not it was revenue recognition for operating grants or revenue recognition for capital grants, here, the corroboration really is what did we identify from tangible capital asset testing, deferred revenue testing, and the revenue recognition for government transfers. So essentially, these three key components all talk to one another. So as a result, we had to ensure that our audit procedures were also speaking to one another as well. And as you can assume, because there were adjustments that pertain to deferred revenue and tangible capital assets, the revenue recognition would also result in adjustments that we did propose to management and were accepted. And as a result, there were no significant findings remain with respect to government transfers. Just quickly touching base on some of these variances, in twenty twenty, you'll see that it kind of got flipped around. The operating grants in twenty nineteen was almost two folds higher than twenty, than twenty twenty, and vice versa, the capital revenue recognition was, you know, I would say, two to three times higher than the prior year. The capital basically is a spinoff of the capital additions and projects that were incurred by the, by management in the twenty twenty year that was not incurred in twenty nineteen, okay? Operating expenses, here, the key risk here is to ensure that, you know, fraudulent expenses are not being performed. Expenses have not been recorded, the risk is that expenses aren't being recorded in the proper year or not entered appropriately at all as well. So here, a lot of subsequent event, I mean, sorry, a lot of substantive testing that been formed, vouching to samples that we selected. And here, again, some adjustments were proposed based on some of the audit adjustments that we we found from our audit testing. You know, whenever we find errors on our audit testing, we would extrapolate our testing or confirm the fact that this error is isolated just to ensure that it's not a pervasive error that kind of extrinulates across the financial statements. So based on the procedures that we identified, no further significant findings were remaining with regards to operating expenses. For salaries and wages here, you know, the key risks here are ghost employees, so fraudulent employees. So we're not, again, we're not saying that this is happening, it's just an inherent risk that pertains to salaries and wages. You know, with a large organization, sometimes if there's not appropriate controls in place, you know, to ensure that, you know, the addition of vendors, the termination, the processing are appropriately segregated, there could be an opportunity where ghost employees are created that does not exist. So how we deal with this is that we focus on the changes in the current year by performing addition testing, termination testing, and we vouches to the appropriate employee records to ensure that these additions are appropriate. So we sample a number of additions that occurred in the current year. Once that has been performed and we are satisfied and no further errors were, you know, where no significant errors were identified, we then would perform substantive analytic based on the knowledge that we know of the new hires and terminations and come to an actual expected payroll, salaries, and wages figure and compare to what was reported by management. Based on the procedures that we performed, again, some minor adjustments, I think, when we alluded to in accounts payable with regards to vacation accrual were performed, but for the most part, salaries and wages and benefits were, was not material misstated, so no further issues there, okay? In conclusion here, you know, our audit procedures did not review any significant deficiencies with regards to internal controls, specifically pertaining to financial reporting, okay? We're not looking at all internal controls of the town, we're focused on the financial reporting aspect. And consistent with our prior year expectations, there are controls that we were able to rely on and we can continue to rely as part of our audit procedures. Significant difficulties encountered during the audit, you know, as we all know, we were, we did require an extension for the twenty twenty year end. This by all means is not to indicate that management was not cooperating, no, you know, I want to thank Clark and Jerry for all their hard work. It's just, you know, the bulk, I mean, the cards that we've been dealt with and management experience, you know, staff changeover, and one of the key ones is the finance director role. So nothing on management, we once again want to thank them for their cooperation, but the delays were just as a result of staff changeover, okay? You know, in conclusion, I would say that, based on our audit findings report, the financial statements for the town of High Level, consolidated financial statements are not materially misstated, and as a result, we did issue an unqualified opinion, okay? Again, we'd like to thank management for their cooperation, support during the twenty twenty year end process. We'd like to also thank council for entrusting our firm to be the town's external auditor, and we wish the town success for the twenty twenty one year end. And before I actually open the floor for questions, I just want to quickly touch on appendix two here briefly about the asset retirement obligation. So the public sector accounting standards for thirty two eighty asset retirement obligation is a new standard that's going to come into play, and will be taken into effect for fiscal years on or after April one, twenty twenty one. So for municipalities, this means that this will come into effect for December thirty one, twenty twenty two fiscal year ends. This is an accounting standard that actually has, you know, existed under part one and part two, which is the IFRS and ASB. And now it's coming into play to public sector accounting standards. Now, one of the key differences here in prior years, public sector accounting standard really only touched on landfill landfill closure and post closure and contaminant site liabilities. Now, with the introduction of asset retirement obligation, this now also touches based on tangible capital assets, okay? So it's not only on contaminant site liabilities, but for example, buildings with asbestos. If the town has any assets that are buildings are very old that potentially have asbestos. This new standard requires that we actually need to perform an accrual to estimate what the actual liability to the town will be. In the foreseeable future and to present value back just so that the town is prepared and and, you know. Preparing for this. We essential remediation in 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 the future. So just like we've done in the closure and post closure cost of of how we're estimating what what these future costs will be. This is more or less a pretty big game changer for for all municipalities now as. Management now will need to assess what are their actual assets. Tangible capital assets and intangible capital assets, or even with regards to to landfills and closures. That will be subject to this financial reporting requirement. So all we wanted to bring to management attention here is that, you know, preparation, you know, how how to best prepare. Although, you know, it's two years away, but that timeframe will 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 creep up to us quite quickly. You know, are there any third party engineering reports that needs to come into play to assist with this financial reporting standard? Some example here, buildings with asbestos, wastewater sewage treatment plants, linear assets, landfill. So we just kind of wanted to bring this up as to be proactive at this and 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 to watch out for this for this new accounting standard. Okay? So this is the end of my conclusion, so I do open up the the floor for any questions at this point.
Council, do you have any questions? I guess not.
No questions?
I guess they really trust you.
Oh, well, I appreciate that. Again, thank you again. Thank you, council. Thank you, management. And even after the presentation, if there is any questions that's come after in the next few days, feel free to contact me. I wish everyone a safe summer and and we hope to see you guys soon.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation, Noel. Safe summer for you as well.
Awesome. Take care. Thank you, everyone.
All right, the minutes of the. June fourteenth meeting. Did did Counselor Welkey not come in by phone?
Um, I know, I was.
Or Zoom?
That was that was the committee of the whole.
Oh, okay. Okay, any any errors? Could I have someone else? Counselor Morgan? It's funny, he couldn't hear me, but he could hear you.
Yeah, it must be just the tone that he might pick up.
Okay, so I sent everybody my report, but I just wanted to touch on a couple things. Beginning with the airport task force, I know we did an up. Report to you at the committee of whole meeting, but our subcommittee met June twenty third. So they will do a report on the scope of work for the for the multiplex. On the National Indigenous Days, I want to thank the town of high level. It was a huge success, so thank you very much for your cooperation along with the Friendship Center. It was great people, drummers, the Cheryl, Seba, Pecaham, Singy, Brianna. Lizott and her fiddling, it was amazing, so thank you very much. And for our bursary committee, I would, I'm very pleased to announce we had six applications and they were all really good applications. But we chose to, it was a difficult decision, but we we chose Evelyn Glover, who is entering physiotherapy. And Allison Douglas, who is entering education. So we wish them every success and everybody else that applied in all the grads. So thank you for that. And those were just highlights I wanted to touch on. If there's any questions, I will answer them from my report. Nope, could I have someone move to accept then? Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carrie, deputy mayor.
June twenty third, I attended the ready board meeting. June twenty fourth, McKenzie Regional Waste Management Committee Board Meeting. The Waste Management Committee also had another board meeting today and I attended the auditors' report during the season.
So what did you discuss at the Waste Management or you're not at liberty to tell us?
I will leave that to the chair and. I saw it's testing camera at the moment, it's personnel issue.
Okay. All right, Counselor Anderson.
I believe June twenty fourth, we had library board meeting.
Twenty third.
Twenty third. And it was. It was good, there wasn't a whole lot to to. Bring up or discuss. There was a couple items that were put off till next month or till the next meeting, I guess. And that was the MOU for for the rental of it. There's their five year facility. And one other one I can't remember.
Multiplex.
Yes, multiplex, its size and how it's great. So other than that, it was it was a good meeting or a good board meeting.
Did you name your tortoise?
Unfortunately, I don't believe you did.
No, it does have a name, I just don't remember what it is.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Jessman.
Not much to, but on the twenty third, I was part of the airport certification working session. So yeah, we had a good meeting there, get up scopes for the three projects that we have listed. And we're excited about getting that done up and moving forward with that. So yeah, that should be coming here very shortly here, the overall finished. Work of scope of work there for those projects. That's it for me.
Okay. I like obviously that it was a working meeting like our other ones are. Counselor Morgan.
So June twenty third, I attended the same library board meeting as. Counselor Anderson, the course's name is Tortimer.
Tortimer?
Tortimer. I don't know if that's a reference to something, I'm fairly old, so if it's hip and new, I don't catch it. June twenty fourth, I attended the wire design presentation of the multipurpose facility, which was very interesting. I thought the walkthrough was cool, very rudimentary. But it was pretty cool, pretty interesting. And then June twenty fourth, we did have a raise Christian Dean that I will discuss in camera with the rest of the council. And then we had another committee meeting at five o'clock. And that is all I have to report about.
Thank you. Counselor Welkey.
On June fifteenth, I had an FASD society meeting. And we have now determined that September ninth will be the grand opening for the new facility. On. June twenty first, very short bursary selection meeting for the successful candidates that the mayor announced. June twenty fourth, the multiplex presentation via Zoom, where we had a really good walkthrough of the building. Wireframe and a better look at what the what the multiplex will look like. Shall we get the funding to build it? And that was everything, I believe, then just the tail end of the auditors' meeting before our council meeting tonight. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. So the virtual meeting was a good meeting?
Yeah, I'm not sure who all was there because it was viewing only, we couldn't see the participants. So I don't know if.
I was there.
You were there.
Yeah, I was, I was a little, I think it was great to put out. I guess with with what came in my perspective anyhow, I would have liked to seen it be a little more in depth. But I think it's just the timing and how they put it all together. But I I did have some some town people, residents who were watching with me and they were quite. Approval of it.
Yeah, Clark and I were in a boreal housing meeting. So we didn't get to. Go through the.
What did come up, like Counselor Anderson is. It it's a, you know, almost a two dimensional, it was three D walkthrough, but but very rudimentary, almost they they. Refer to it as looking at a looking at a building in an early state of progress. If you're walking through and just seeing the studs kind of thing. But perhaps Director Wolf too, like if if we can encourage them to do some more renderings, because I think it's important for the public. You know, if it's possible to get more more pictures. I understand with the pool area, it's difficult because a lot of it is. Design and decorating interior design that would come later. That wouldn't necessarily be be part of their scope, if I understood them correctly, you know, in terms of the development and design of the building. But with the, you know, with how with how important those newer features were and how I think exciting they would be for the public. If they were able to render out, you know, a few more images of what the what the facility will look like. Would be would be great for promotional purposes.
Would that be a financial add?
Well, I don't see that, that's what seemed to be the opinion of many people here, but I.
Well, it's not my opinion, I don't know.
No, but I I just feel like with the technology nowadays. I I don't know, perhaps, or if you could.
Elaborate?
Yeah, but it but it just seems like, you know, we we can get all, we can get these kind of things, you know, and design a home and walk through it and look at. Like it's it's the the technology's there. So I don't know.
Maybe the homes have been done before.
True, true, but. Yeah, like the the data's there, they have to just flesh it out. Like if we want to see what it looks like when it's finished, they almost have to take a snapshot of any of those three dimensional images from the facility of what they have. And then create the the interior work. So so I'm sure it is a lot of work and maybe there is there is costs, but. We really need to show the public, you know, like what this place and all its aspects is going to look like or what we envision. And and those rendered pictures, you know, if there are just a few more of them, the key aspects, some of the more important aspects of the building. The pool, the play center, the library. You know, we don't necessarily have to see all of the hallways fleshed out, but just some of the. You know, the the really high use of, and and especially for the public that. Maybe is still thinking, you know, I don't, I don't do anything on ice and I don't have, say, kids in school, right? So they want to, you know, to to see what the facility and its other features in the pool and, you know, and the the track is all right. We do have some renderings of that, the indoor track. But for for there's a lot of different people in the public that, you know, we want to get on board for this. And the more the more pictures, the better.
Counselor Jessman.
Well, is this an ask or is it we just these wish lists? Like, I mean, if we ask for this, I mean, the sky's the limit, I mean, it's going to cost us down the road if they if I run up here. Director?
Here, we've signed off on their contract, they're basically done once they've completed the detailed design. But they are still working with me, we did a small change of scope to work on the last grant that we're not, so I need quite a bit of engineered background for that. So everything, there's a bit of a cost. Part of the reason why they didn't have the detailed renderings for the for the pool is we had changed from the schematic to the detailed design. Our original schematic, we didn't include the lazy river, the leisure pool. So that wasn't as developed as the rest as far as details, but it can be done.
So perhaps you could ask them for a cost.
Yep, absolutely.
And bring it back to council. That way we can.
Yeah, like, yeah, is there a price for it?
For what I've seen, I I've got a really good feel of what's there. I mean, I think there's more important, other more important things that we need to get in play before we go further down the road with drawings and and three D. I mean, we got to get some finances put in place, but that's just me. I'm pretty happy with where we're at right now. And I mean, if we go move to the next stage and we do have funding put in place, then, you know, that that could be planned in the future for those. Those better renderings of what it's going to look like. Right now, I'm personally, I'm happy with what we've seen. And I think the director and the town have done a great job in getting it out to the public. I mean. The people that I've talked to have seen the pictures and drawings and are happy with it.
Wouldn't hurt to ask for a cost though.
Yeah.
To see what it is, even if it could be second stage once we get funding.
Yeah, that's the that's the question on everybody's mind right now is who's going to pay for it and when are we going to? There was a question asked today, but once the sod turned in, that was.
While we continue to reiterate, it will not be built without federal provincial funding, so. I mean, the town cannot afford eighty eight million dollars. Any other questions? Okay, could I have someone move the committee report? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carrie. Any questions on the administrative reports? Yeah, yeah. Seeing none, could I have someone move it, please?
So moved.
Counselor Morgan, all in favor? Carrie. Under new business, the RFD for Community Peace Officer Program.
Madam Mayor, this was reviewed committee of the whole by the council. If there's any other questions, Director Schmidt would be happy to answer them.
So, yeah.
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
This was my rising report, so I'm.
So I would like to have a little overview so that the public can, if they don't have the report, they can at least know what we're doing. You don't have to give all the bells and whistles, but just we give a little report.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. So as I discussed in the committee of the whole last week with council. Council has administration to bring forward a RFD to enter into an enhanced policing agreement with the RCMP. Under the Enhanced Option Two program. So the Enhanced Option Two program is basically a by the hour. Enhanced policing program where we bring extra officers in as required. The purpose of this program would to would be to supplement our peace officer program and assist with any downtown policing. That we assistance with and provide support to our single peace officer right now that we have on shift. The cost estimated at two officers, two days a week is fifty one thousand dollars. As council is aware, with the new policing funding framework by the province, our, we had a budget this year of a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars for our existing enhanced policing. Program, our current cost for twenty twenty one is seventy one thousand and eighty five dollars, which leaves us a surplus of ninety three thousand dollars. We're proposing that this is absorbed by the existing policing budget, so it'll have no impact on the existing operating budget.
Is there any questions of Director Schmidt? Okay, could we have a motion then?
Okay, move the recommendation here.
Okay, deputy mayor moves the recommendation, all in favor? Carrie. Thank you. The request to fund public works to resolve the stormwater drainage issues.
Madam Mayor, if there's any questions on this, turn it over to Director Shaw.
Director Shaw, would you like to give a little report to allow the public to know what we're doing?
Here you go. Eddie provided the RFD.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry, Bill.
I never read that part.
Can you hear the British accent? Good evening, mayor and council.
Slightly revised request on the financial side, $28,000, I believe, was the recommendation at the Committee of Whole meetings. So it's been bumped up to 30, just to add in developing the utility right-of-way agreements, so the easements for the certificates of title. So essentially, we have drainage issues in the Deer Ridge Drive area is the first one, and that is a result of standing water on one of the vacant lots that we have on 100 Avenue, not draining out to the street, and some of the lots are lower in the back, higher at the front. So operations had a look at a few different solutions to this issue, and the one that was presented at Committee of Whole involves a stormwater catch basin in the rear of the lower property with a drainage line running along the fence line to the north drainage ditch on the northern side of Deer Ridge Drive. So that's the first one. And then the second one is the Beonson Park, so the town, the land owned by the town there, where we have similar issues of water, standing water pooling. So again, the directional drilling with a, with a line under the park going out towards the northwest. So together, the cost there is approximately about $28,000 to do the work, and then just an additional $2,000 to do the, the legal documents there for the easements. And another point I wanted to add, that I added to this request for a decision moving forwards, we adopted our new, revised, I guess it's new, the Building Permits and Standards by law that has some of these conditions in there to ensure that the lock grading certificates are provided after the occupancy permit. So we will be adding those as conditions to development permits moving forwards, or the subdivisions when they're approved, or new development of vacant lots to try and mitigate this issue in the future. So yeah, the request today is for up to $30,000 from Operations Reserve to resolve both of these drainage concerns.
So, did we always require lock grading certificates?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It's been so long since we...
Yeah, the building standards permits, Building Permits and Standards by law was in effect in 98, and it was a requirement. I can't remember if it was 90 days after the occupancy permit or 12 months, but the stamp we have now in the new one is 12 months. So whether, you know, it wasn't caught on follow-up, or whatever the issue was, the reality is, is this problem has occurred, and we checked the land files correspondence, and there isn't anything to show that they were submitted or signed off.
And they were, they were developed after 98?
Yes, I think 2000, I believe, 2000, 2001.
Yeah. Any questions from council? Could I have a motion then, please? Counselor Morgan, all in favor? Carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. 13-3 is the RFD for the partnership with the Denny Towns.
Madam Mayor, if you wish, I can provide a background on this RFD. The Towne High Level has been engaged in a federally sponsored community economic development initiative called SETI with the Denny Towns First Nation from 2018 until the present year. As an outcome of both communities' participation in the SETI program, three documents have been created to formalize our partnership's joint vision and the goals for the long term, which have been, are being presented to both councils for adoption. A fourth document is also being presented tonight, and that is a memorandum of understanding for a Joint Regional Emergency Management Plan as created through the Joint Regional Emergency Planning Subcommittee. The documents being presented to council tonight for adoption are a Joint Strategic Plan for the Denny Towns First Nation and the Towne High Level, 2021 to 2026, a friendship agreement between the Denny Towns First Nation and the Towne High Level, the working group terms of reference, and the above-mentioned memorandum of understanding for a Joint Regional Emergency Management Plan.
Okay, any questions? Okay, so we need a mover for the friendship agreement. Okay, Counsel Welkey, all in favor? Carry. For the Joint Strategic Plan? Deputy Mayor? The terms of reference? Oops, sorry, all in favor? Terms of reference? Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carry. And the MOU for the Joint Regional Emergency Plan? Okay, Counsel Morgan, all in favor? Carry. Thank you. So the next one is the tourist enhancement grant.
Madam Mayor, that will be presented by Director Wolf.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. So we have two applications for the tourism enhancement grants. We have four cutoffs, cutoff dates, but I'll move these up a bit because with COVID, people often have an opportunity to really plan events and that sort of thing. So we have an application for $5,000 from High Level Golf and Country Club, and for a slow pitch, we're recommending $3,500. This is based on a matrix that was predetermined, and the matrix is based on if it's a regional event, if it's from the province, how many people are involved, and come up with an actual number that relates to a, a dollar amount. So that's what we're recommending based on that. And as well, the Golf and Country Club had asked for if council would sponsor a pool at their midnight open for $500. So generally, our council donations are only up to $300. Administration looks after them internally, but because it was over that amount, I thought I would bring it to council at the same time.
Okay, any questions, council? Do you want three motions, then, I guess?
I think just one to prove as, as I've suggested here is mine.
Hold your motion if you want.
Okay, all in, shouldn't we have a, like, shouldn't the enhancement be separate from the council donation? Just...
It is a different line item, if you want to make two separate motions on that, that'd be fine.
I think we should, because they are two different line items. What's council think?
We can do two.
Okay, let's do two.
Okay, I'll do the first half.
All in favor of the first half? Carry. The second one, council to make a donation for 500? Counselor Morgan, all in favor? Carry.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Could I have someone move to accept the audited financial statements?
All.
Counsel Jessman? All in favor? Carry. And the RFD for municipal elections?
Madam Mayor, council has in front of it an RFD prepared by Ms. Jamie Batt.
There are some political signs.
I, I see that new titles are a period.
Clark and I thought about what to call them.
We figured if we called her consultant, we might not have to pay her.
Yeah.
So advisors, so. Madam Mayor and Council, the next year of our election is Monday, the October, March 18th of 2021. This is the one day of vote that is required by law for the municipal to hold if there are elections for any of the positions. Under Section 73 of the Louisville's Election Act, the, the council has the right to set advanced polling stations. Administration is recommending we hold two advanced votes, one on Thursday, October the 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and the second on October the 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. By giving one a little more than a week in advance, it gives people who may not be in the area the opportunity to vote. And by having Saturday, of course, it allows people who are Monday to Friday the opportunity to vote before the election.
Okay, so we have staff to cover this?
Yes, the staffing will take usually four or five staff who are shifted out, and that is a, of course, a 10-hour period that's over. So there will be overtime involved. Of course, we can insert other dates the council may wish.
What does council wish? Do you want two days, one day?
I think two days are appropriate, and I think it's up to administration to select them, say.
Could I have a motion then, if nobody wants Counsel Welkey?
Alternative one.
Okay. All in favor? Carry. Thank you, Jerry. The next one is a briefing note from the Alberta Treasury Board.
Madam Mayor, first off, my apologies, this started as just an information item and turned into a request for a decision. As part of the 2019 budget, the Alberta government has committed to transitioning the municipal population estimates to a different model. My, it's, it's our belief that what the problem's trying to do is stabilize that funding and have predictable funding from year to year on municipal grants. The presentation by Treasury Board on the, on how that is estimated is included. Administration has no concern with the formula that's been put forward. It's actually quite, quite complex, but it, it does seem to take into account most anything that occurs. Our concern is, is that as a baseline, the Alberta Municipal Affairs of the government is planning on using the 2016 census. That, our concern is that the inaccuracy of the census was noted by the municipalities in this area. It had shown, if I remember correctly, and I'm waiting on the stats from the School Division right now, but it had shown a growth of about 100 people in the Towne High Level, and yet the schools had increased by almost 300 students, with no increase in rural busing. So somehow, there was, there was an extra 200 kids floating around that weren't accounted for, nor were their parents. So included in this is a, so, sorry, so both municipal district, or McKenzie County and the Towne High Level opted to do their own municipal censuses, and in the case of the Towne High Level, almost 700 extra people were found. I believe in the case of the county, it was over 1,000.
1,200.
1,200. So anyway, the difference in the projections provided by Alberta Municipal Affairs and our actual municipal census is shown on the second page there. If we go by them, or if they use the 2016 census, federal census, as a baseline, we would lose over 600 people from our number count. McKenzie County, and we'll send this to their attention, lose over 800. So neither of those figures would, would take into account the growth in the last five years in either municipality.
Did you attend this presentation?
Yes.
So did they give a reason for the 2016 census?
They were asked that by a number of different municipalities, and essentially, the answer was they had to start someplace.
So we all did, like, there was probably 60 municipalities that did?
72 is what we had.
Oh, 72?
Yeah.
That did, that did their census check, so should it not tell them something?
Yeah, and I'm not sure that, because Treasury's putting the formula together, and Municipal Affairs is the one that gets to live with it, I'm not sure exactly what the connection between the two departments are. Our suggestion as administration is that we write to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and express our concerns on the use of the 2016 federal census as the base, baseline.
Were there a lot of municipalities on, on that call?
It was, yeah, there were quite a few. I can't remember offhand, because of course, they're controlling it, so you can't see all...
So when was the meeting? I'm just wondering why it wasn't on nails?
I think it was three weeks ago, Sunday?
It was so painful, I can't remember.
Okay, doesn't matter. Council, would you like to write a letter? Okay, who wants to make that motion? Counsel Welkey, all in favor of sending? Carry. Thank you. So I pulled out 14-3, because that's... Oh, so, sorry, 14-2 is the request for support for the Joint Forest Management Agreement. This is a letter from Tocco. I see it was written by... Alan Velkold may just ask me at the Towne High Level to put in a support letter, because they are renewing their FMA, which begin, I think, in September. And so I said, yes, I'd bring it forward to council, and we would write them a letter, probably. Seems they are the major employee of the town.
Let's join the help between the two, right?
Three, isn't it?
Three, LaCreek and Norberg.
LaCreek, or not Norberg, West Fraser and Tocco. And he was bringing it here. McKenzie County's already approved it, and I think it went to ready.
The, the discussion that we had in ready was whether or not this time around there was going to be any other stakeholders in terms of First Nations to get allocation or not, and we didn't know the answer.
Well, I did talk to Alan about that. First Nations always have a logable cut, and so does Towne Prairie.
Okay, but I didn't, the discussion was, we didn't know whether it was part of the FMA or not.
They're, they're, they're not going to hold it for the FMA.
But not all the First Nations, not all.
Like 11, this, this doesn't include 11, which is, which Beaver has an interest in. It doesn't include 26, I believe?
No.
Or 23?
Doesn't include that 23, which is the reds.
Yeah, so Little Red already has that.
Doesn't include that 14.
Yeah, 14.
Which is the Danies.
Well, ready voted in favor of sending a letter of support. There were just going to be some follow-up first to make sure whether or not we were capturing all of the intended user routes or not.
So does council wish to send a letter of support?
Yes.
Could I get someone to?
I'll move that.
Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carry. So back to the AUMA Leaders Caucus. It's, I moved it out because I would like to attend it, but virtually. I hate virtually, but I'm not going to Sexman. I just want to keep my thumb on the pulse. If anyone else wishes to attend either, wherever you want to attend. But I would like a motion that I attend the July 29 session by Zoom.
I'll make that motion.
Is there anyone else interested?
I'd love to, but I'm not available out there, and I'm not driving to Sexman.
Okay, all in favor? Carry. So, Ms. Beaton, you will, will you register, book me down?
Well, I'll stay in my room at my house, but, and I'll have meals brought in, you know?
We will make sure we will work your way back.
Just virtually, yeah. And the next one I lifted out was Alberta Care. I was wondering if we should send maybe Mr. Straw, since our waste management mis-encompasses a lot of that? I mean, like, we could send a counselor too, like, maybe you, maybe Boyd, to this, it's in Cold Lake, in September, 7th to 10th. I just thought it would be an interesting, since we're kind of struggling with the Waste Commission, something to bring back to it.
I would be in favor of administration going in. I'm sure we want to send a counselor so close to the election.
Yeah, well, that's what I thought. But I thought it might be an interesting, for at least administration, to bring this back to report.
Well, I agree, if this was a non-election year, I think this would probably be a good idea for this administration, for people to attend it, just...
Maybe both Clark and Keith would want to attend.
In Bonido.
How that?
It's in Bonido.
Oh, isn't it? Why did I say Cold Lake?
Why did I say Cold Lake?
There's no, Cold Lake's a lot.
Oh, okay. Well, doesn't matter where you go, but, so, does someone want to make that motion then? To send administration or to administration if be?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Maybe you'd like to move. Because you hope the Waste Commission. All in favor? Carry. Could I have someone to move the rest of correspondence for information, for information?
I'll make that.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? So, I'd like to thank the public for joining us this evening and, uh, I hope you will all join us on Canada Day and, uh, may Canada Day be a day of reflection for what has been going on in Canada and a day to talk to everybody, uh, about what's happening. So, thank you for attending this evening and we will be moving into in camera.
I'll make it.
Counselor Jessman. All in favor? Carry.